First of all, this is not an oversight, it's a public hearing. Yeah, and there are two members of the Portfolio Committee that are present, and there is no need for a quorum of the members. No. No, it's... Sir, I was starting and I was going to get to a point where I explained why the three members are not here, but... Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Firstly, can I ask you all to please stand? We're going to observe a moment of silence for prayer and meditation. You have an opportunity to pray in your respective ways. Amen. Thank you very much. You may be seated. As I was introducing myself, I'm Brandon Pele, a member of parliament in the National Assembly and a member of the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs. I'm also the chairperson of the session and leading the delegation on the coastal team. With me this morning is Honorable Tito. Thank you very much. And part of our team is Honorable Lechwase, Honorable Ramalobeng, and Honorable Kanile. Unfortunately, Honorable Kanile was called away by her political party to participate in a debate as a physical sitting this morning, and she could not be with us. And Honorable Lechwase and Honorable Ramalobeng are indisposed. Excuse me? Indisposed. I must also indicate that they have been part of all the public hearings thus far, except for this morning. I also want to acknowledge the presence of any councillors, members of provincial legislatures, members of parliament that may be here this morning, traditional leaders, community leaders, that are joining us, heads of political parties and organizations as well. Thank you very much for being here this morning. Can I just get an indication if there are any members of parliament or provincial legislature or councillors that may be joining us this morning? Or traditional leaders? Thank you very much. Welcome. I also want to acknowledge the presence of parliamentary staff, support staff, protection services, communications, Home Affairs Committee staff that are present here with us this morning. So the purpose of our hearing is that parliament has come to the people to listen to the views of our people. We're here to receive submissions, proposals, inputs on this very important bill as required by the constitution. And I just want to indicate at the outset that members of the Portfolio Committee will not be asking any questions, neither will they respond. We are here to listen to all of the views and submissions that are going to be made. It must also be noted that all views that are expressed will be considered and taken into account, and there is no right or wrong answers. So you must be free to speak and to be able to present and make submissions on however you feel. All of the submissions or expressions will be then considered and taken into account when the committee deliberates and prepares a report after all of the public hearings. Just to give you a short background, on the 11th of June 2020, the Constitutional Court, in a matter with the New Nation Movement, and we refer to it as the New Nation Movement case, declared the Electoral Act of 1998 to be unconstitutional. And to put it simply, what it was saying is that the current electoral act does not allow for independent candidates to contest general elections. And in doing so, it means that we must be able to make amendments to this act in order to first satisfy the case in terms of what the court has ruled that we should allow for independents to contest both national and provincial legislatures. And so the Minister of Home Affairs then introduced the bill... Well, before, let me just ask this. When you entered, there would have been two documents. One, which is the complete or entire bill, and then a single page which has a summary of the bill. Does everybody have those documents? Thank you very much. So the single page, the summary, speaks to the amendments, the changes that need to be made to the current bill. And in almost every one of the items or numbers, you would find the inclusion of independent candidates. And so the court gave parliament 24 months to be able to make these changes. And the Minister of Home Affairs then introduced the bill to parliament on the 10th of January, and we then published in all official languages and called for written submissions between the 21st of January to the 21st of February this year. And after this process, we then had two days of oral submissions where interested parties, individuals, organizations expressed an interest to present before the Portfolio Committee, and we had two days of oral submissions on a virtual platform. There was 13 submissions that was made to the committee. And then we commenced a process of public hearings, which is public participation, and we started from the 6th of March. Due to time constraints, the committee had to split in two. We had a coastal team that was covering four provinces, and this being the fifth. An inland team was also covering four provinces and then met here in the Western Cape as the last one. And I'm pleased to inform you that we have thus far completed eight out of nine provinces, and today we start the last province, which is the Western Cape. Briefly, the draft bill proposes an amendment to the Electoral Act to include independent candidates in both the national and provincial legislatures. Now we're going to proceed with oral submissions or presentations, and I just want to indicate that depending on the number of people that wish to present, you would have between three to five minutes to make a submission. And the chair will indicate to you if you are closer to your time to wrap up. And if you are still not able to wrap up, then the chair is going to have to ask you to stop. Also want to make a very important point that we must listen to each other and respect the different views. You may not agree with what someone is saying, but you must respect that they have a different view. I also want to indicate that the center row where the chairs are turned over is the seats for speakers. When we begin, we will ask you to sit in this row and go one after the other to the podium. Also feel free to speak in a language that you are comfortable with. So that you are able to express yourself best. I'm also going to humbly request that when you take the podium, if you could take off your mask, it's just easier for us to be able to hear, but also assist with our sign language interpretation. Also, let me remind you that we are still in the midst of a pandemic and that at all times, please stay in your designated seat, maintaining physical and social distancing. Please also ensure that you have your face mask on, covering both your nose and mouth, and that you're only allowed to be taking it off while you're speaking or if you're having water. And Parliament Protection Services will be on the floor to ensure that we maintain all COVID protocols. We're now going to proceed with our hearings, and I want to see by an indication, a show of hands. If there's anyone who would like to make a submission, you can just raise your hand and I'll identify you. Yes, sir, your hand was up first. Okay, so we're going to start with the gentleman with the mustard, because I saw your hand up first. I saw you. Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up? Yeah. Also just to indicate that the mics will be sanitized before and after each speaker. I'm coming to you. I just want to finish up with... Yes. There was a lady with a green. I saw your hand up. Are you still speaking? No. Okay. Yes, sir, you can join that. Yes, ma'am, you can join him. I'm going to... Okay, sure? Because I want to move over to the next side if there's no more right. Yes, sir, I saw your hand. You can join them. Thank you. Is there anyone else on this side on the first round? Thank you. You can join them. Do we have two more chairs, I think? Two, yeah. I can take two more people for this round of submissions. Okay, let's... Okay, thank you. All right, so when you start, please introduce yourself. So give us your name. And also, it's important to note if you are representing an organization, representing a collective. It's always good to know that you are coming here to present a view on behalf of a group of people. It helps, but also to indicate whether you support the amendments or not. For record purposes, it's very important to note whether you are in support or not in support of the Amendment Bill. And just for the record, all of our proceedings are recorded by parliamentary staff as well as we are broadcasting live on all parliamentary platforms and social media. So we are recording all of the submissions that are being made. And in respect of your submissions, translation will be done as a summary at the end of your presentation so that we don't interrupt your presentation. And lastly, we are here to take submissions or inputs only on the Electoral Amendment Bill and nothing else. So there's no service delivery matters that will be addressed. There is no other matters outside of the Electoral Amendment Bill. You will speak only to the topic of discussion. And as we proceed, Honorable Tito will chair the presentations or the speakers. I'm just going to step out for an interview for a few minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. I will take over now. You can come and start. Thank you.
Mr. Pele, you and your colleagues and all the attendees, I greet you all this morning. My name is Sanele Nkombela. I don't represent anyone, but came here to submit my submissions as a citizen and a resident of Kailij. I'm not sure if you give yourselves five minutes in parliament to speak, but it's fine. I've got only two points as my submission. The first one relates to the question of floor crossing or a person passes away or resigns, whatever the reason may be for that person who ultimately makes it to parliament as a member and as an independent candidate. One is of the view that there is a necessity for by-election in that regard. One stresses this on the basis that that person... Because we are familiar with this, when a ward councillor does one of the three things I've made a mention of. But it will be a new thing when it comes to the provincial legislature and the national legislature. That person will not be actually a governor. So one sees no necessity to have an option of by-elections made available. That's one. The second and last point is that we have observed that people are greedy. And being a member of parliament is seen in a way as providing some benefits and big remuneration or big salary. Now, I want to propose that before a person stands as an independent for either the legislature at the provincial level or legislature at the national level, that person, if he or she happens to be a member of a particular political party, he or she should disassociate him or herself with that political party a year or 12 months before registration as a candidate who is an independent. Those are my two with respect submissions to the bill. I think I have not finished my five minutes. Thank you.
The interpretation, you can come and interpret for us. Thank you. Thank you, members of the public. I can... Can you also, all of us, when we come here, we must indicate if we are in support or we are not in support, thank you. Mr. Sanele, yes, can you come?
Sorry, sorry Chair, I fully support the bill.
Next speaker.
I'm from Kwaibulisa. 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 I'm from Kwaibulisa.
I am Lutando, I am from Ward 114 in Fuleni. I am a leader, I'm a Chairperson at the Sex Area. I am an independent candidate. I approve this and shall be. I believe shall be a remedy to us. Majority persons' interests are not considered if they are represented in organisations. Only during election times you see residents being considered. I believe well now we shall be recognised correctly. I have a question. When discussions were being made of this act to be implemented, the numbers of the persons represented were that considered. I wonder have it been considered, the number of seats that they shall have? Independent candidates are always also there. I support this bill that is being proposed and I believe that the interest of all the people should also be considered in the way forward. I thank you for all that I have supported.
Thank you, you can come forth.
Honourable Chairman and the Committee, we're at a crucial time in the history of the South African nation when the citizenry are questioning the accountability of the state. The key to this concern, in my opinion, rests in the whole matter of electoral reform and we have to have a quick look at the history. In 94, at the dawn of democracy, the original simple system put in place was straightforward proportional representation, designed to give stability to a new democratic state and reflected in the constitution. But it was not, definitely not intended, as a permanent electoral system, as the expert Van Zell Slabbett explained. In 99, when Mandela left presidential office, he called for a review of the electoral system. In 2002, President Tarbu Mbeki established a task team, again led by Van Zell Slabbett, to examine electoral reform and they called for a constituency-based representation by voting for a specific individual plus proportional representation known as a mixed system. In 2006, Parliament appointed an individual panel to assess the electoral system and they found it in need of electoral reform. Since that date, no concrete action has been taken until today. That is 16 years ago and in addition, the same government has been in office. However, the Constitutional Court judgment of July 2020 requiring the amendment of the electoral law not only allowed for independent candidates at both provincial and national level, it also clearly saw the need for a more accountable system for the voter and indeed the electoral reform needed for independent candidates indicated to the court that proportional representation would be affected and would need investigation. But Parliament has made no changes to the proportional representation system and thus we have created a wasted vote scenario at present. A cabinet member in deducing the bill implied there was insufficient time to implement the full tenor of the judgment. I have to ask why. Concorde gave Parliament two years to effect a bill, but the government has only introduced it in the last six months before the cutoff date of June 2022. This delay in producing a bill, I think is no excuse for an inadequate one. In addition, he clearly implied that the demographics of South Africa made proportional representation the essential system. That statement is in direct conflict with the conclusions of the investigative panels to 2006 and also the Concorde judgment of 2020. The proposed bill definitely favours the status quo of party politicians and does not give independent candidates an equal opportunity for election. But importantly in addition, there is no attempt to address the need, clearly shown between 94 and 2006, for electoral reform beyond the matter of independent candidacy. That is to include a more accountable voting system for the electorate through having constituency-elected members of the National Assembly. I am forced to come to the conclusion that in this bill, the electorate is being sold very, and I repeat, very short on what the various panels recommended 16 years ago and what the Concorde judgment of 2020 intended. Firstly, throwing away independent votes damages both voters' and candidates' rights. And secondly, avoiding the establishment of constituency-based members of parliament means poorer government accountability to the electorate. So it seems to me that the government is choosing to miss the opportunity of becoming more accountable to the nation of South Africa. I do not support the amendment.
Thank you, can the interpreter come?
I'm from Kwaibulisa. 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 I'm from Kwaibulisa.
Potanma Wetu, Kumlise la nomchinja na Walapikai. Ikama nguka malilili wa kwa tuba. And isanzomela, eh, People's Bill, di ngumpati wolu cha lewana South Africa. Colleagues, I want to start with a phrase by the late Albert Lutuli. He says, "I am in Congress precisely because I am a Christian." And so therefore, colleagues, I speak to you as an evangelist with hopes that I speak to your morals but as well as I speak to your hopes. To say, this bill speaks first, it has created legislative ways to legitimise the exclusion of independent candidates by imposing exorbitant fees. As my former speaker had said before, that this means ordinary guys like me who have aspirations for public leadership, but because they do not have the financial muscle, because they do not have the funds, they will not stand the chance to lead. I believe this is immoral. Secondly, it has raised the numbers of signatures to access. And so colleagues, this means that if we are not connected enough, if we don't know enough people irrespective of our tenacity, irrespective of our creative ability, irrespective of our hopes and aspirations to liberate our people in the rural areas or in the underdeveloped townships, we do not get the chance. And so with this having been said, colleagues, as I try to land my helicopter, I want to say that the People's Bill, it accrues with the preamble of the Constitution of South Africa that says, "We the people, that the people shall govern." And so therefore, if it is in the interests of the people, the best interests of the people, we will go with the People's Bill to say... I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am thinking of the quotes that were laid by, eh, late Albert Lutuli. Eh, the interest of the people, as it was said by the former speaker, that they should be considered, particularly the interests of the youth. Although there are no funds, it should also be considered. Our signature is an issue of importance and it must be taken into account that we are in the underdeveloped township areas.
Thank you, thank you. Can you please interpret in Sichos, in Goza? Because of the guy who was standing here speaking, he spoke English. Thank you.
Okay. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa. I am Kamali, a youth leader for One South Africa.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Asha Kasim, I'm from Stramfuntani 043. I'm a current PR councillor for the EFF and the EFF Cape Metro Regional Treasurer. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the ISE and from Parliament, over and above other political challenges. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national general elections on the following conditions. Firstly, the threshold for the nominations of independent candidates must not be less than 20,000 and these must be people who are registered to vote and the ISE must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Secondly, the reasons we are saying this with regards to the thresholds must be higher for those wishing to contest is because if it's lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and it will be impossible to efficiently administer from an electoral point of view. Thirdly, the deposit that independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by political parties and it must not be refundable as the inclusion of independent candidates will come with cost and people who wish to stay should not be taking chances. Those who contest as individuals independent candidates and get higher votes is required to get, and wait parliament must forfeit the remaining votes because they should or rather they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity, an option to contest as political parties. And lastly, we strongly discourage by-elections to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such is permitted, the country will permanently be in elections. Thank you.
Thank you, wait, wait, wait.
Hello, Suka, I'm a councillor, Ward councillor for the EFF. I'm a representative of the South African Party. 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 I'm a representative of the South African Party.
Thank you. I'm now going to hand over to Honourable Bile and then he will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much Honourable Tito. We may proceed.
Uh, we may proceed.
Eh, manitadilchu bandibulishe, eh, ki parlamenti nomtu omu lapanga pakati e wudweni. Ika malamdu ngubangi le tuku tezi, ndisuka gawadna ninety-three, eh site B, eh Trevor Vilagas Branch. Eh, ndime apa, ndingu chepesi niwe NGO, isupkichi ne maspatisane, ndawonye ne neba uduachi, eh ngusia pambi eh accredited, ndi community leader. Eh, ndima apa nokasa, lomteto sekelo uyilwayo, injongo zo indoba nukase, siqala sele si zikomunito kanyesina abavoti abatati inwaklayba, oteba, eh si banyulayo siti si batemile, bayasi feila, abanyani seganga ekstali, benza unotanda, abambisani o kanyaba edani no luntu ngakasana. Londo nditigengu kaku no kwazi, ono business, i NGOs, i sporti, kutatwe ababantu bangeno NGOs umseke, ifusikene, ba digani swe, ba kupwe umtu omuye, lonu zabangu mka zwa fori inansiki NGO, njalo njalo uku yakono business. Cause uyafumanso kuti apa ekstali, baninzabi abantu abane zakono, yoba banga kwazu kukoke ekstali, indena ba ababona, kutatwa lomtungutawam. So ndima apa geno uti ndiyaukasa, lomteto sekelo utewa yilwa, pans kwezo zizatu, so kufailwa, go ward councillor, be political organization. Engos.
Engos.
Bangele tuku tezi. I greet parliament members. I am from Ward ninety-three, site B. I'm the chairperson of an NGO and also involved in a soap kitchen. I am a community leader. I support the Electoral Amendment Bill. Leaders are not looking after our interests at all times. They are sports and business people, all nominated. I believe that people should nominate a person from the residents who will be having the interests of the people or of the world, and who shall consider all the interests of the individuals. I therefore support this eh bill.
Engos.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'm the tallest in the room.
Yeah, they'll assist you to adjust the mic.
There, there must be a slight adjustment. My name is Solomon, and my surname is Boy. I'm coming from One South Africa Movement. I'm also a business owner, and I'm also a local resident in the Western Cape. Right. I'm opposed to the bill that the government intends to pass because it is unconstitutional. I support the constituency-based system and the People's Bill. Right, let me explain why am I saying that. Eh, Chair, yesterday, we were supporting or celebrating the Women's Rights Day. And I must say that, yes, we celebrated the Women's Rights Day, but to some people, this day was not meaningful. I'm referring to our independent candidates because if we look thoroughly on the bill, they are not fully represented, or the bill is treating them unfairly. There is a word called oppression. Let me quickly break it down. What is the definition of that word? It says oppression is an unfair treatment of a person or a group of people. And this is exactly what is happening if we continue with the bill. That means we are going to continue to treat the independent candidates differently. Therefore, we are oppressing them. Even though we celebrated the Women's Rights Day, to them it was meaningless. Next month, Chair, we will be celebrating the Freedom Day. That's on the twenty-seventh of April. The same thing is gonna happen. This day is not gonna be meaningful if we continue with this bill because it is not gonna be meaningful to our eh our independent candidates, and they are not liberated. Now, if we apply the People's Bill, that's where we will be putting the people of South Africa forward, and we will be liberating them from where they are standing at the moment. Chair, there is a word called democracy. Lot of people are misrepresenting this word. Eh, this is a Greek, Greek word which was derived from two words. The first word of democracy, which is demo, it means, it means people. The second word, greek gretios, it means rule. So the word democracy means people shall rule, and that's exactly what needs to happen in our country. That's exactly what needs to happen if we say we are a democratic country. And Chair, I must be honest that because we cannot choose on our people, we cannot elect our people that are going to lead us in parliament. Therefore, as the people of South Africa, we are not in control. We are, we don't have access to elect our people because political parties are imposing people to us, saying this is the person that you should, you should elect. Meanwhile, it is not in our interest to elect for those people that were imposed to us. There are so many defects on this bill that need a remedy. Let me just pick one out of all these defects. Number one, it says independent candidates are limited to only two hundred seats in parliament. Independent candidates are not allowed to contest for the two hundred national to national seats. This is purely unfair. We cannot have a democratic country and we treat independent candidates as if they are not from this country. No. They are also citizens of this country, just like me and you. Eh, we are creating a system now where we are saying, okay, you can come in, the, the politicians come in, but independent candidates remain outside. Are we calling that democracy? No. That's not democracy. Independent candidates are not allowed to contest on the national to national elections. So the question for that is why? Wha- what did they do? What, what is it that is different with them to receive this treatment on the bill? Chair, in nineteen ninety-four, we had what was so-called the end of history. That is when we had freedom. That is when we celebrated victory over apartheid. But this oppression on the independent candidates, it is taking us back. It looks like we are going back to apartheid where black people were not allowed to go to town at night. This is exactly what is happening now. And the irony of this is that we have witnessed a lot of growing assault on our democracy. And this is one example of an assault to democracy. So we are gradually killing our democracy that we fought for so many, many, many years. And what is happening, Chair? Trust on our election system is going down. Elections have become less and less competitive because people are losing trust. People lost hope in what is happening in our current election system. Eh, there, there, there is even evidence that the voter turnaround has declined. How can you have a decline from nineteen point seven million to seventeen point six million? That is a total decline of our voter turnarounds. Do we want that in South Africa? No. We want people to go and vote. Like we are saying, your vote is your voice. Let our population go to cast their vote so that they can make a difference in our country. I'm completely. In two thousand and two, the cabinet appointed an electoral task team which was chaired by the Frederick van Seil Slavet. He was chair of the commission. And their task was to draft a new election legislation, and this was a requirement from the constitution. In two thousand and three, the Frederick van Seil Slavet Commission released a report, and this report found a lot of defects on the current election bill. And part of the recommendations from the Slavet van Seil Commission was, a good election commission or electoral act must have fairness, must have simplicity, it must have accountability. What do we mean about accountability? We are not talking about eh collective accountability. No, we are referring to individual accountability. Hence, as the population, as the citizens of this country, we want to select our leaders. We, 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 we believe that the closed list proportional representation, it is not favoring the independent candidates. Voters are not properly represented, Chair. Public survey also was conducted in our country. It is also indicating that people are not happy. It is also indicating that people are tired. It is also indicating that this motto that says your voice is your voice, it is not working anymore because we cannot cast our votes. And as a result, our democracy is going down. We, 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 we are proclaiming we are in a democratic country, hence we have a different treatment for other individuals. So Chair, there is only one solution. I'm finished. My last point. The solution is, we have a solution. To eliminate all these defects, we have one solution, and that is the People's Bill. That is the Licota Bill. That is the permanent solution. It will make everybody happy, and we will have a peaceful country. We will have a fair democracy and a democratic country. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sitike suka apa, sitike sone sinusoma shusheni kwaye sinumshan. Tikaya kambisani kenalum katwa uklonyelwayo, ngoba ke ufumana unge, unge ko-constitutional. Utike zolo, kabe sipioze la usuku lamalunge lo abantu. Eh, olusuku, bilunge nansingselo. Kuba katso bazmeleyo, ngenge ngayo ba bona, basatuneselekiile. Eh, utike na ngoku sisa upindasipiozele, umshawe freedom tengo April, kua kona uzapinda, ngaba nansingselo, kuba katso bazmeleyo, ngoku banabo, basatuneselekiile. Utike isombululas bonayo, ilap People's Bill ngoba, eh likama liti i democracy eh lilupata kwa bandu. Utike likalulue kabini, limele, limele utemo, umele abantu. Utike eh le, ipati yokabela, imele upata. Indoke leo ete abantu bazaklaula. Kotwa asiboni londo isenzeka, apemzanza Africa. Utike yeena injela ibona ngayo, lomteto uzele, uba uzo zama, uko kontrola eh ababantu ngoba. Uteke kaisenzumseke lo wati kuko, izpenes ninsa sfumane yopaya kotwa. Wenza umseke lomga le iti, iztlalo bazufumanayo, eh zikwenglwe azunaukreta kutuan ret. Utike kuteni ke bona bezako, bezao patwa ngendela eh yelshukeleyo, ngoku ngati bona, abangu bandu bazemzanza Africa. Indonika nde yelshukeleyo kubo, indona be yenzi leyokuze bazumane ukpatwa ngalendele. Wapinda wa kona wa tapase la, eh, uku ba ngo two thousand and two, kua kuko eh, ita ela ilali nyulewe, elaliko kelwa ngufanseil Slavet. Ela ati lenza ke upando, labuya ke nenngelo ngo two thousand and three, lisicha ukbango kweneni, lomteto ezonyulo walapemzanza, unezpenes ez ninsa. Kwaye ke wa bazanaso ke inmabiso, eznotike zenzas isombululukotwa ke, azkange ztatele ngalele. Ngoba tasi chongile na ngoku abantu, ba apelala litema, kuinginaba yoku vota kanga ngoba, sibonile kuvoto esuka kulu abantu baninzabi abavota, ngoba kaluku lemiteto ye zonyulo, kanganu kanganu, yalubulala ulaulo lo abantu. Utike isombululas anaso ngapambili, seso ukbama kusekenzisela People's Bill.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Bandibulishe, i inganga ninti bazayo. Eh, ekameni engosui esu. Eh, lumye ngapambili, gumsele, ikama ngukawlezile. Di lapa ke eh down two, ki Ward ninety-seven. Ya, namke ebendingomye waba katzwa, ebemele imi buuto, okuti kubeko untlala kache ekstali. Kanga bemnandi ke ukuti sipume, sioba imi katzwa, ngendang yoku bona ukuti abantu bakuti, bayakune zeleka. Ngoku di yavuya ke ukuti sibiziwe nati apasbe konna. Eh, mnadi ma dichongile ndisafunda klepil kutetu angayo. Eh, mnadi indo umtu onguzmele, noko, andivumelani nomteto, okuti kumelezekile, okuti ba upasiswe. Okuti ozmeleke, ke abantu bazo bazo kumela abatu, ngoba unobangela ukbandi icho, kungo bana umelezekile indo yenziwe sisabantu. Utikowe tu esiyakukonza yo, akabe sosiku, ukonza ngeziku. Na klenake indo uku bana sinochonga ukuti, le ipili okuti ibe umtu o independent ozoti atandwe ngabantu. Na ka izindo zingambi kaku tle uzaku uma, achwa ati, ebendinga kange kakati nini ebeme funili. Kanti ka izipati imi buuto, izindo ezizo ukuti kupume kuso abantu, abazu okuti, bachonge imfuno zabantu. Di akondu kubana ye yonandela inteleyo, ye yonandela ibimeleba uchulmenti uyayilandelela. Akonde ukuti imfuno zabantu zienze kanango kwenzela. Kwaye ai, ai kusele imi buuto, ekoyo ez, ez, ez ovotela. Umseke lo endino kuchonbandi mrau mraz kusele. Kuba koi keshala po kuvotoayo, eh, imi buuto ibelane in numbers. Ufumanso bana kuko ilan i, i, i votes den, ez yo lacho emakalin. Sitela uchulmenti kakulu kakulu, kwe lojala ebena kokuchonga. Kotwa ye yonandondi imeleyo kakulu, kungengay abantu, abantu senga banga fumana intelela, yokutimalaulwe ngendela efanelekleyo. Kwaye akondo inokuza ebantuini ngapandle kwa bandu. Kumelezekile zongizindo, zize ebantuini. Zimelezekile zonge izindo, ibesisi kaimo, esipuma ebantuini. Ukuzi abantu bakwazi, ukuti batosa, batosa me, kuinginzele abapetengas. Di yavuya kakulu ke namke ukbana apa. Engos.
Engos.
I am Mstela Kawlezile from Ward seven. I greet everybody present here. I represent our people who are oppressed. I am not in favor of the independents. I, I don't think it is good. People should be represented, and I believe this from a heavily belief from God. Eh, independence is not always right. At times, it is wrong. Eh, party alliance is correct to consider the needs of persons and protect the voting rights. There should eh not be spoiled papers. People's interests must be considered. We should be governed properly with all our interests being considered. I thank you. I support that idea.
Thank you, but it was Ward ninety-seven, not Ward seven. Thank you. You may proceed.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Bungseni Fagu. So I come from an organization that fights for the rights of people living with disabilities. Uh, I see here we are not really eh presented by the parliament. Uh, I see that there were no question of sign language if there is a, a sign for people living with disabilities.
Can I just correct you? There is sign language interpretation.
Excuse me?
There is sign language interpretation.
But you didn't communicate with that. You never mentioned it. If there is anyone who needs sign language, you just said Africans in English.
No, right at the start, I said we have interpreters and sign language.
Okay, okay, no problem. So eh, when I, while I was in the queue, so I, I thought that, okay, let me, because this, let me change the communication, the mod, the medium of instruction. So let me change it to my comfortable language, which is Xhosa. So now speak from the heart. Thank you. So Bungseni ke, uki organization, eh, melamalunga labantu abapilanga disability. Now, i, i people... Now, ipile na, eh, tina asi kasi because, eh, kukoi candidates apa besfunu ba ipati of ipile. But yeonoku ilando yoba abantu banga na IT, baninska kakulu nabu, abanyi, some of them ebemengena IT too. Baba we ipati yale ye, 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 ipile. So, gumtelamgeno mkulu indo yeonabina IT ke yevo. So sifunuguti eh lisabe, likapile kakula, abantu bapila ngati disability ba most yabo abana IT. Eh, kukole indo kutwa late registration of birth. Late registration of birth, we think that it tati kashelite kakulu. Some of abantu bazbulele ngayalondo because abana IT entiti alape South Africa. Now, sisheli na abantu apa abanin chungenkulu kui community zetu. Since it's eh, and I think i, kangi chonge kakli ba, because as is kete nubama sisa lue pi organisale ngabaza labanjani, organisale East End Cape, organikupina. But Londo le umteleno mkulu. Because abantu baninsa basuka ngapa goma East End Cape. Eh, basuka apa befi kabenge nasi IT, then ibe i problem yeonoku Londo le. Di akwela lisabe eh likapile kakulu Londo le. Yoba ukabantu isheli nabu, abanga na IT, which is home affairs. And yeonoku we processes abu, tati kashelite kakulu, engos.
Can I ask you to just stop there? My limited understanding of some of the things that you are saying.
Excuse me?
I'm saying that my limited understanding of what you are saying, and I'm still going to allow for translation, seems like you are not speaking to the amendment bill. Am I correct?
I'm not getting you. Can you? Eh, I think it's very relevant, sir. It's chief, it's very relevant because what I said, some of the people, they wanted to be candidates of the electoral. So they couldn't because they didn't have IDs with them.
Now...
So I think that the sector is very relevant to engage in that manner.
I am not going to engage in a dialogue. But I'm going to say this with all humility. If one is contesting an election and is not even registered to vote in the first place, do we even take them seriously? And I'm not going to engage in a dialogue. Because you said there were people who wanted to vote, to become independent candidates, but they didn't have an ID. And how as an adult citizen not have an ID in this country, and then you now want to contest an election?
But now the problem is where do you raise those issues? It's a relevant sector, that's what I'm saying. That's what you need to deal with. It's a relevant sector, isn't it? It's home affairs. I know it's amended and been, that we talked about here.
Okay, so I think you are taking advantage of the Home Affairs Committee, which I respect. I don't have a problem with. However, I did say, we are here to discuss the Electoral Amendment Bill, and we will only take submissions and contributions directed to the bill. And I discovered by the time you were speaking that she was related to IDs and late registration. I'm going to ask you to please be seated because you are not making a submission that's relevant to the Electoral Amendment Bill.
So, but what I've said will be noted, isn't it?
What you have said is noted, yes, thank you.
Should I continue?
However, I just want to say that he must not leave without having spoken to one of the staffs, elect the Home Affairs Secretariat, so that we can be able to pick up on the matter that he has raised. Thank you. Okay, I can still take submissions if there is any. Thank you. Okay. Yes, thank you. You can, behind them. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a submission? Can I see by show of hands? Going once. Going twice. Thank you, that's where I'm going to close it. It is our three submissions. That's where we are going to end. And we are privileged to have with us a former Member of Parliament and a leader in his own right. Thank you very much.
Eh, Molweni, Sanbona Nidumela. Thank you so much, Chairperson. And I truly mean no disrespect, read this process. I think it's an important process in our democracy. And therefore, if you could convey my message to the Portfolio Committee, that I think it would have been prudent to have all members here. Because I think, given that the judgment was taken twenty months ago, and now we are heading towards a June process, I also think that it undermines the will of the people when we leave only four months for the submissions of the public and then say we've complied with public participation. I think it undermines the spirit of our democracy. But more to the matter at hand, section nineteen-three states categorically, that every citizen has the right to public representation. Fellow South Africans, I think it can be fair to say, it never meant, as Judge Malanga in his judgment made submission, that in fact, that means that only political parties can represent the people. It's at every citizen. And I want to urge today that if we're serious about this process, let's allow every citizen that right. Let's not make it simply about the concept notionally of independence. But as in the judgment, the sentiment was expressed that Amanda ngawe tu. The judge used those words not to say Amanda ngawe political party. He said Amanda ngawe tu, meaning the people. And so I want to ask that we restore that judgment and say, let the people govern. This process has been fundamentally flawed. I think all of us can agree. It has left it to the final minutes. It's allowed political parties to position themselves. But here's the biggest flaw. A MAC report was tabled. It gave two options. The executive arrived and said you'll take the minimalist approach, which says just make minor amendments. What was presented to the public when they arrived here today is the option given by the executive. So what is public participation other than public indoctrination? It simply says, only consider this view. And I would argue the case that there is another view. And that's the private members' bill that was tabled over seventeen months ago by Honorable Likota. At least, I would accept that this is not a farce by being able to put the two in front of each other. But yet again, the parliamentary process has triumphed. It has said, no, let the politicians rule and let the people be ignored because the People's Bill must be ignored. It cannot be tabled. Honorable Chairperson, you and I know very well that when I was in parliament, often what used to happen is we have what we call constituency period. I want to talk about Charlotte Maitake. I want to talk about Kailecha. I'm almost certain the ANC, the DA, and all political parties have what they call a constituency office here and one at Charlotte Maitake and one at Baraguanath. In fact, they have them all across the country. When we design the parliamentary program, part of it says parliamentary settings, and the other part of it says constituency period. When we pay the salaries of members of parliament, we don't say parliamentary work, constituency work. We say we pay for the whole thing. But here's the miracle. When a bill is put before parliament that says amend so that you can include constituencies, no, 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 no. In that instance, we refuse because we want the constituency period to be a party constituency period rather than the people's constituency period. So now Charlotte Maitake, a district of Johannesburg, sits without refurbishment, but where is the Member of Parliament? In Kailecha, people may end up without services. Where is the Member of Parliament? When it comes to issues of national competence such as security, such as healthcare, such as education, where are the members of parliament? They are not there because they have to serve the party. It's a typical sense of majoritarianism that delivers a dictatorship, I would argue. So I want to urge, in the People's Bill, it makes it quite clear, let's choose a constituency-based model. But what you've presented to the people is simply to say, let's allow rich people to stand as individuals. That's what you've done. And that to me is against human rights. It's against the very essence of our democracy. And that's why I think the president says in parliament during the week, he says, I fear forecall. And I apologize, Chairperson, for that word. It's not, but he corrected himself by saying I fear next. But here's my worry about that statement. It's not that he used the word forecall. It's that also what he meant is that I don't fear the people. I'm a politician. My party will protect me, and the people will not matter. The third is the actual political challenge. Fellow South Africans, when I was leader of the opposition, I remember all too well, we voted on Ngandla. And it passed because the majority and the party ruled. Because every single member of parliament arrives in parliament, takes an oath to the constitution. But truly what they mean is that I take an oath to the party. Because even when things are unconstitutional, they will vote for them anyways because the party said vote for them. This parliament has been found so often in court for passing laws that are unconstitutional. And I would urge, this one is going to end up in exactly the same format. So let's not be majoritarian. Imagine if a member of parliament said my constituency rejects the Nganda report and therefore voted and still kept their seat. Then we have a democracy. Imagine if we do the same with Zondo. Imagine if we do the same with more other acts of corruption. Chairperson, I think today, we must ask members of parliament to come back to the people, to fear the people, to not only fear the party. We have a crisis before us. We have an economic crisis. We have an education crisis. But I'll tell you what our greatest crisis is, is that we have a representation crisis. Parliament no longer speaks to the people. It speaks to party interests, and the people are left behind. That's why I'm not surprised that certain members would opt in or opt out. I know, Chairperson, I beg your indulgence. So what I want to wrap up with is this. Africa as a continent has direct elections. South Africa doesn't. Why? We've gone through a history where we've sought to say, even in nineteen ninety-four, we knew that we needed to come to a constituency-based system. President Mandela said it, President Mbeki said it, President Mukanta said it. So I struggle to understand what is this party favorability that says, no, we are not going to do this? So I want to categorically state, I reject party dictatorship that this bill would simply suggest. And I want to go back to Judge Malanga's proposal. Let us give power back to the people and let us give representation back to the people. Oh, this whole thing, I'm afraid will be a farce. I thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much. Sir, let's wait for translation before you present. Thank you very much.
...
bekme ndokwana snevoting system ka mtu vota ngoku kwinneve center i vote yako ikale zivele ngoko ngangoku ayenze kilon funeke kuledu votwe kungene labanda bangamase la bade i vote zienzekele londo nalapakuti tigunbasin indobe kmelasiya kualasele kala esu what I ngesilungu sngati illegitimacy of votes. I vote iswele kumtulolo ovotileyo okusabini kumtibwe transparency when it comes abama lamalungu angaka IEC ibanga bantu aba affiliated ne political parties tigunbasin indobe kmelasiya kualasele azamkele kanga bekme ba umtu osabenzela uvoto ibe umtuzmeleyo onge lilo ilungu lomtu ovotisa yo even if begnokwata ndokwana ababa votisa yo ilungele labo lokvota lingabiko zamukuge lonbiya kwenza free and fair elections. Okusabini tigunbanana iti pekwa isysteme kumila kunge ibeseylungu selelu okuti i benefit abandabati le enganga bo abakanye kanyebangme ndokwaba vote okusabini ninto klomtibwe independent candidates ingalabo yamo kumtibwe lungu talonile, kumtibwe disciplinary ingaba ilulungu nao disciplinanjani, kumtibwe legal siyazze South African namshange kukua i battles most matters bekme basi resolver okwe politiki koto imitibbe minzi resolver kwenkuntla samachala on the courts. So zipointe ndiakuzi dini picture ke yomtu i independent candidate utzalelo kwenkuntla amachala au koto amachala lomsebenzi au newelu wana abe engakange akwa zikutu wenza. Now, zamukuge it's a brilliant concept, but sekonisindo ebemel ndokwana kala angazo kala sekualasele zitiniswe, zilungiswe ezikesindi zikanga ni okusabini nyani sinndokwana umzegelokwane inkokele khlalin tiguan umfundise khlalin most ye political parties mapetewinyani azinas branches zibagowu genyene zivuka kavza ovotwa kha zipinde zio ufanamta nyane londi tetindokwana azna constituency structures eskona, ingake koyo loin lolde kitenndokwana maybe nyani kaguvuki candidate esuka from ebantu in i kokela bantu ibino kwasubana nyani i kokele impuno zabantu patitlalamlinye ndokwana ingaba na uyao kwasukulaula yet okusabini last point is the number of votes zomdo votelu as a independent candidate. Now, the threshold ya ke yoba ange ne ifuma kwenze kanthuningesini numbers esasabesfumene benkundobana amna ifu votelu lomtu independent candidate zonke sa votes mele ziyeku ye okanye abena amantla okwata ti sikrebu sokbanas mele ziyepina esu votes. Nkoko lakaku, Nkosi lakaku.
Nkosi.
I am Sakale Kula. Greetings to the panel. I'm from R Africa Alliance. Eh, I understand the bill and what it seeks to achieve. But I think there are some aspects that need to be considered. Aspects like when you campaign, you need finances. Where will the independent candidates get those costs? Or how will they be able to fill those costs? And furthermore, noting our voting system currently is unacceptable. We supposed to be... When the person is voting, we supposed to be see, to be able to see the vote that has been casted on the nerve center system. But currently, it doesn't happen. We have to wait and wait and wait. And along the process, there might be some mischievous actions that takes place along the way. And the other thing that bothers me, there's no transparency in terms of the members that are working for the IEC. Most of them belongs to political parties. And yet, my view is that they are supposed to be nonpartisan. If in order for someone to be working for IEC, that person must be first nonpartisan. The other thing that concerns me about the independent candidates that makes me not to support them is the discipline. If they happen to go astray, who will be able or have the power to discipline them? Where will they have to go? Furthermore, it should also... I have a picture of an independent candidate here taken to court for failing to fulfill what he or she was supposed to do. Those kind of things need finances. And I'm really, really concerned about the finance that they need to have for them to be able to campaign. For instance, I belong to an organization which is kind of independent. We tried to raise funds, but we only managed to get two seats for us to be represented. And the second thing is that I'm a community leader. I myself. But we become leaders only during the time of elections. And after that, we don't have branches. We don't have constituency offices where people can reach us. And the other thing that concerns me is the kind of threshold that is set for the independent candidates. The threshold that is set there, the excess number that goes above the threshold, what is going to happen about those votes that are above the threshold? I would understand if it was said they need to decide themselves where those votes should be directed to. So those are the things that concerns me, that makes me not to support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
I will address this meeting today with Fenech. So we are in Kailijah, so omkona spikosa. Eh, man di bulise sixteen eh malunge e parlamente ingokele zonke eskoyo i kamalamdungu ayanda wa kwa nonamba ne efane ndesuka wa thirty-five apa ngaselowo the regional coordinator yewan South Africa. Eh, slalo ne parlamente nindendo esmbalo ay enfunusbeka okokala ndibulele ebantu in abate eh bapumi pulo balwa beluela okuti namshange masbeglen da ositota ingalomba eh wesipil sibini eh ipile e parlamente okokala manibeke takwa ngabana ndiye opusa ndiye kas ngoba ipile e se parlamente ay singe tanga tina ipile e se parlamente ikunisela amalunge lo bantu njenkumtun nga tutsimi sikarete ngoba ka kuzauvoto i community ay consultwa uvukekse no uponi i posti umtun ngamazi yokutwa vote la lu umtubana ngabana oma no butshala pilamtu ka kukua izinndresenzeka yo esu umonakalu ekta leno kusicha masndobana ngabana lomtun namfuma napana no butshala apetalene kukua abantu aban... 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 uklala ngesup kitchen besenzi simalisababa fuma ningaso kwenmali e water allocation esuka koholo mentis yavcouncil i information e puma yo ayisi ebantu in okcouncil kanyi political party zibeka ngapawkumkusan abantu feneke bakjalelo bangabana banayo imale puma yo kongo nyaka a million rent esuka kusitof Cape Town isiyakui wati zapopata banda banala information ngoba i political parties zinemi, zinesindo esisfita esgazisiyebantu in i independent candidate unyanzele ikilesbe kona ndiye endosa ipil kaleko tanaamshange ngoba yeye yonayo nando isaukulula abantu glengakisikuyo yobanga bana simana sitongisa kistumbes ngasekoyo zasiluela zakreba yakre tindoyazo asose bangabana sivome i future bantu ana betu kutwa masibulan ipile e parlamente isobulali future bantu ana betu abanda bapangele kunzima oteba ibesenzi bai kupagobso bangabana yomembaye political party tile sosufuma lomsebenzi namshange ndiye bulela gela ngana namshange ndiso tengoso bantu in abate basbonelela obanga bana sequazu tetela malunge la bantu ana betu namshange isup kitchen ashaswa inkonzwa namishabo konzela ka kukumshabo koyo pa uyao utena kukcouncil utatuswe ngapuswe ngapuswe ngapa enfakwenzukesminu boni konde na pa kahuka Mohamed Abdul, awasba ngabungeni njani pa zipinde tinasi thomas okasalondo ap asesango kasa londo ap pa emakaya kukabantu ana benga nasangu kukabantu ana balala benga janga koto i konimali water allocation ekutwa yokeo foru council kupinde thomas kasa londo
Let me remind you that we are not dealing with service delivery. Stick to the electoral amendment board.
Esu ndischilo chairman bangabana ndiye endosa ipil kaleko tengoso
Thank you. I know that at times we can be tempted to move away to service delivery. It happens. It's normal. But we have to be very specific. If I've done it to others, I must be able to do it to all speakers. Thank you.
The previous speaker is the regional coordinator of One South Africa. And they're opposing this bill because to them it represents the oppression of human rights. Um, he says that the communities are normally not consulted when it's voting time. They just see posters of people who are strangers to them going up. And then the community members also who assist the community with stuff like soup kitchens don't get the funding because the political parties don't bring the information to the people about the funding that the city of Cape Town is giving out. And he's also mentioned that the bill is actually here to kill the future of the children because the councillors only give jobs to people that they know and these jobs are given out at night. The communities continue to struggle. He also mentioned that communities struggle even to get sites to build churches, but they see...
Skip those parts of service delivery. Just speak to the board.
That's basically all that he was saying.
Okay, but he was in support of the private members' bill, the Laquarta bill. And he was endorsing what previous presentations from speakers from One South Africa was making. Just that he went to specifics in his service delivery in his constituency. But yeah, we got your submission. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to to the end of submissions unless if there is... Yeah. I'm only going to allow this if it's something new. I'll tell you why. Because I asked, I said I'm going once, I'm going twice, I went three times. Unless if you are going to bring in a new point that has not already been said. Yes, sir. If you have a new point, please come to the podium. And you will be the final speaker for today.
Man, bulise. Di bulise e parlamente yetu eh ngokushtoba. Di bulise abat... amatanda azwe akunyene ati ngalimina namshange so oninkokele zetu eh ingonyela esumeleyo e parlamente eh tindendeni ngai fire ap kuela pepeke lo kulungo uchinjolo miteto eh ingaba ga... ingaba ga kaka esenzeka kulo nyulo esuka kulo azifili ubasa usonjululwanchani okakwa kue pokisi okutukwa kabantu otreba yonge nje unga patwaka klesipri sighting officers eh nikitelubuza parlamente yasekaya ndokwana esu zinaki sitopepe sequazo okusame apa na lepili, ya ikasa yonepili koto esu zinaki zika one-one-four umzegel nesniwati ezitez abesenzu luniulo sialkalela niza uslangabezane nasonjani koba kwa one-one-four sisacheli kuingaki esingaza ubasa usonjululwanchani ya ukasa kumteto ozmele keke sanele singabana belilizwe ukutukiswa ngama kuki asinkokele semibuto utolo ngoba nitukise koto ke istosa seamba apo sitela inkokele esu zungozmele keke naso zinyani seke, Nkosi.
Nkosi.
I greet everybody, our members of parliament present.
Can you get closer to the mic, Baba?
I greet everybody, our members of parliament present. And the problems that were sustained in previous elections, no solutions have been made. Nevertheless, I support the bill that is in front of us as I am here. There are various problems and these problems have not been solved. We have heard enough from liars or people of independent organizations who are not honest to ourselves. Thank you.
Titalusa siyasa tigumawaka tomose eh ndimele independent candidate egumafuza ukweha wasimpule ngoa one-one-four dia kolisa ngongasasis amantla
Tomose from the independent organizations. I'm from the independent organization. I ask for an apology because in the beginning, I failed to introduce myself here to the panel.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Nkosi. So I'm going to first give you the process and the way forward and then attempt to give you a short summary of the deliberations here today. So as indicated at the beginning, this is the first day that we started in the Western Cape. But it's also part of the last province from all nine provinces in regards to our public hearings. Tomorrow's the final day of all public hearings. Thereafter, the committee will deliberate on the findings of the public hearings. And as indicated earlier, we will take all of the submissions that we've received, obviously go through it, the notes that we have captured, the notes from parliament staff, to then be able to collaborate and then have discussion on all of the submissions that were presented. The portfolio committee and home affairs will then make a recommendation to parliament and it will then be submitted for a debate in the National Assembly. And after which, the bill will then be voted for. But let me also outline that there are two houses of parliament, the National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces. the National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces.
Kwakona mandi kakti selle, ndioba iparlamente ke yenzo azinzhu esimbiini, eyoka la yenzo wisomthetu yesizo in National Assembly. Esbi ni ibele ipungale sizo lamapondo i National Council of Provinces, zeyazo ngoba NCOPE.
And so the Electoral Amendment Bill also needs to go to the NCOPE. And if they choose to open the process for further consultation with provinces, then they would see the need to do that.
Ile umthetoskomele ke uzau thunyelo na payake kipungale sizo lamapondo NCOPE, na yo ke i sena ko ukuchikeleza, ikangeleza yo izimbo kui nda uesi kapasela ke amapondo.
And it's at the end of that processes when the president will then sign the bill.
Ku kundzele lo inkubo ke ye pungale sizo lamapondo NCOPE, apo ke ngoki autige lo umthetoskomele oyotwa taka, pambi komoga mili ukuse ukala selle autikiki.
Now going to just give you briefly summary of some of the submissions that we've received here today.
Goku kenza kuensaje shangatelo si zinyezesu paga misso esesas pula pula namtsanje.
So from those that are not in support of the Electoral Amendment Bill...
Abo ke ba tyeba uska si ke lo umthetoskomele.
Are proposing and supports a constituency-based system and made reference many times to the People's Bill or the Lakota Bill.
Abo ke ba ngavka si lo umthetoskomele ba tike ba kasa bo na inkubo ekileke, kuluntu lue ngila ali tike lisbelilo ali shtongela, abanmilabo, macho kebe kasa ke eso lo ndwa ikabisa yo ngolelikota pil.
And this is a private members' bill that was presented to us by the Honorable Lakota.
Lo ke ngumthetoo yeluayo obutu etu bu nikeselue kuti lilungu le parlamente ngukusiku.
There was also a submission or presentation that we should refer to the Von Slavitt Commission and report that already existed.
Kuapinda ke kwabanya keza bisupaga misso, ba tetabekileke ngalo ke ka Frederick von Hilslabert, be kasa kisupaga misso esu zenzwe ke kulangel.
It also spoke to the PR system that does not benefit independents and that the solution is the People's Bill.
Ba pekisake na kipr system abati ai ba kamlisi, aba amalungo angomtuzmele lo kanya angosmele kekwe.
There was also a concern that we should restore the judgment and let the people govern.
Kwakona kwakoe inkalabo ipaga niswe yo ba ke, ma kushuni chwe isi kwebo esu kuchwa ilankulala, yemka koseko kuvunyelu uluntu kutilulaule.
Again, there was reference to a constituency approach or option that should be taken.
Wa tetwa ke na genkubo ke ye constituency ekfunke na yo ikala selle.
And there was specific reference made to members should be accountable to the people and their constituencies, and they should be in line with having to go back to their communities.
Abo ke ba paga misso oko ba yeba zatusa, be kuni sa nda yo ba ke uyulungu kufanele indoba likuazu pindula, kuluntu lukua zutobe la ngila, ali puma kuyo kanya labantu ali puma kubo.
It was also noted that we should allow every citizen the right to public participation.
Macho ke besiti ma kuvunyere na upena ummi umsanzafrika, abeno lunga lulu tatin ngatreba kuluntu.
And it should not just be about independent candidates or movements, but it should actually allow power to the people to govern.
Ekfuneka nga akunya selle kanga ba kuvunyelu nje, oba nduwa ngosmtizemele, oka ye abantu abakimi butwe tille ukuse bakua zukuskaza. Nabani na ikhaleni otinga ukuti angana amantla ukuskaza, unelunge lo lukua zi ukumela infunoso ukuskaza maka vunyelu.
A concern that was also raised was that there was only one option presented and that in the MAC report, there was the minimalist approach that the executive chose and presented only one view in this bill rather than having to allow for both of those options to be presented.
Koba kwakoe inkalabo yo ba ke, iluntu inukuzi swenje umbono omnia wendlela enkubo enholande elua. Uluntu aline kanga inkubo zatuka tukane yo luse luse kete lo ngukua yo. Kwakoe inkalabo inkulu ngalondo yo ba ke noko uluntu ke ngachulia kathwa ke ngalendlela kuensu ngai. Kubake kutwa ikapinate iketenge, usobo olutile yati ma kuiwa na lenkubo iluntu.
And to those that were not supporting the bill or are not in support of the amendment bill, said that we are not ready as IEC or parliament for this process.
Abo pakati kwa ba tyeba ikasi ke lo umthetoskomele, ba yeba kasa nentjesfana no ba ke amakosa sibenzela IEC, awa ilunge langa inkubo enge na kapasa, yo kusebenza kule inkubo yo nyul.
There was also concern raised about accountability and who independent candidates will be accountable to if they're not accountable to a collective but rather to themselves.
Kwapinda ku paga niswe indo yo ba ke, abantu abanngomtuzmele independent candidates, zonake kasi tezaskaza, ziza obasi pindula kubani umsakele, obanga ba ngomtuo yewapumi ngelenu ezintwe zikuenga, kubani ozomtsalsa pantzi ambeke ngelenu.
And there was a proposal that there should be a strict criteria and in terms of the threshold, at least 20,000 to qualify in terms of signatures that must be verified.
Kwakoe ke ilisupaga misso soba, ku kwa inkalabo malungo bangano miyenge omiselu yo, wokba ke ngomtuma kabeh une vuti singa pinamseke le tute ngongo 20,000. His signature says 20,000 ekfunke ngomtua banazo ukuse afumele ke ubanga kats.
That deposits must be the same as political parties and not refunded because they should be treated the same if they are contesting the same space.
Kwakone nduwe tike it depositaba ichaula yo kabana taba funa ukuskaza nje ngomtuzmele. Ekfunke be ichaulile ma ifana nenye deposite ichaula ke ngamakala iso politiki. Kubake bonke bazobe belue la isanga isini yo kanyi ichaula isini.
And also that in terms of filling of vacancies, that they don't support by-elections all the time because this will be cumbersome and you can't be having by-elections in the country almost every other month.
Kwakoka koni inkalabo ipaga niswe amalunga ke, yo nyulolo valuske uba ke alusolo ku bancha alolo ngiklaisha, wa ke indoba kutakutu zote kpele niaka kukoko kusenzo yo nyulolo valuske u, ai kolisi kama ndiye kwabanya bantu.
And then there was a concern about financial support or funding for independents or campaigning.
Kwakoe ke inkalabo amalunga ke neenkaso yesesmali yabakatswa ke abasmele.
Again, there was a concern about the threshold and the number of votes that one needs to acquire in order to get a seat.
Kwakone inkalabo etiye paga niswe amalunga nomiyeke we voti, ekufanele ngomtua abena zo ukuse afuma nishal.
And there was also concern raised about the excess votes. When one reaches a threshold, what do you do with the excess votes that an independent may receive?
Kwakone inkalabo yo ba ke ka umdethe wa fikela la ke glomi voti zakeza fikela la, glomiyeke utinge ga ukuse afuma nishalo. Ezikuti sile yo zonaa ifu ti kuense kanduu ningazu.
And then there was also a concern about the IEC and how independent are they because there were speakers who felt that they are aligned to political parties and there is no transparency in the part of the IEC.
Kwakone inkalabo yo ba ke, amakosa asibenzako IEC, ukulu tembakala kua wonukusmele kua ubenga, bengo yamami butwe iso politiki, yakala bisalondo, kubake abati mbakalanga, unislabo bangamalungo kimi butwe politiki edlitile, londo ke yabakala bisake o kanyi bonakalsa uka tembakali kua abo ke, kubavuti o kanya banya babavuti baba bona benga tembakalanga ke ngaya londo.
And as I bring this public hearing to a close, I want to thank firstly all the participants here today, that is our citizens and communities, leaders that have come and spent this morning with us.
Kasi fikela le ku ikukumbelenke lenkubo ya namtsanje, yo pula pula le zimbo zenu, si funa ubulela bonke abo ba tiba tati ngatreba, mashtrobisa ngalimina namtsanje. Kwakona si bulale no ngomtungamnye ote was dina, getre shalake wazo utsala apo wazo pula pula wa ingalenye yale inkubo.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be here and make submissions. And I want you to know that we value all of the submissions that were made here today.
Si nbulala kakulu kukuzitina kweni unezo ba klenzu namtsanje, nibe inkubo, nibe ingalenye yale inkubo, kuwa yoke nez paga misso ntenasi, nazpekisake klenzu, isupaga misso ngasi ye sikabi seke kakulu ke kule inkubo.
And while there are those who may see this as being a fruitless exercise and a waste of time, we actually do not undermine the value that every one of you bring by coming to this hearing and being able to make a submission.
Nanguenake abanye mtsanbebe bona atile inkubo, inkubo njo yenke takaisha enge na enga, bona kalshinzu ni pokonukuni kabisa. Kotwa ke imi kalelo ngali ye elteli uzangomtungamnye ote wateta klenzu, tinasi ile komiti sile kabise kakulu.
Thank you to all the councillors that are present. Thank you to all members of legislature, if they have arrived, to traditional leaders, to community leaders, to organizations. Thank you to all of you for being here.
Si bulala bonke oti keba ba tiba si wonga, ngoba kukabu namtsanje apa, ingokele zimvili, ingokele zesa kaliswe, ingokele zasekhaleni, na ba bonke abanidbalapa namtsanje siya nbulala, ngoku bona kalsa inkalabo yenu neinkalabo yenu ngeliswele.
Thank you to our interpreters, translators, sign language interpreters, to all support staff. Thank you for being here as well.
Si bulala ke na basibenzie abakasa le komiti, na ba kuko libelu imene na ve sign language panga senfa, siya yabulala ye kalelo le.
Thank you to Honorable Tito and also to other members that have been part of the process going forward. And our meeting is now adjourned.
Si bulala ke noson peklega Tito nabanya abamalungo be ingalenye yale komiti, nentlanganeso yava la.
Thank you. Engus.